Can we get rid of the city clerk emblem down there? So that Mike Johnson will jump on here.
It will make room for all of them too, when he joins in, I think.
It will make room for all of them and for your, the view that you see is not necessarily what TV, with the people on TV are going to see. You can change. Mike, this came on.
There you are. Hi, Mike.
Vacation Mike. All right.
He's connecting to audio, so he's not quite there yet. Okay, are you on board, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, I think we've got everybody here, so we will call our meeting to order. And if you'll join me for the flag salute, I'll go ahead and say it today. Siana puts our little flag up there. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands. One nation.
Under God, indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. We'll call please, Siana.
Before I call, Will, can I just ask everybody, remind everybody to go ahead and mute your microphone if you're not speaking? That would help with some of the confusion and the switching of the camera. Councilmember Glazer.
He's on mute.
It happens. I'm here now, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Here.
Mayor Long?
Here. Thank you, Siana. At this time, if anyone from the public wishes to call in and address the council about anything not on our agenda tonight, the number is 725-1484. And we'll give it a few seconds to see if the phone rings. So receiving no phone calls, we'll go into our first item of business, which is our consent calendar. We have 10 items tonight, including city council minutes and our departmental reports, including admin, community development, finance, parks and rec, police, public works, River Lodge, report of dispersements, and the continuance of the declaration of a local emergency due to COVID-19. Does anyone wish to pull anything?
Look, to pull five and eight.
Anyone else? All right, Mike, what's your comment on five?
It's, it actually covers both of them. The work that the CCC has been doing in the parks. They cleared out ivy from the trails up through the back behind the pavilion. They did a lot of work in the creek earlier and I was walking through there today and noticed again how they removed ivy that was climbing the trees. There's, they didn't remove it from the higher part of the tree, but they cut it to a point where they can't grow together and the upper part will die off before it kills the tree. And just to make things even better, they donated some time and worked at the River Lodge pulling weeds. And I just think that they're a great asset to our community, not the work they do during the special events and especially this work right here. I'm just glad they're a part of our town.
Thank you, Mike, yes. Siana, do you think that you could get a card and we could all sign it and send them a thank you card?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, that sound okay, you guys?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, they're a bunch of really neat kids who do a lot for our community, so we do appreciate them. All right, moving on to city council business, we have.
Wait a second, we gotta approve the consent calendar.
Thanks, Dean.
You betcha. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar items one through 10.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Siana?
Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thanks, Dean, for keeping me on my toes here. All right, now we'll move on to our city council business. Item A, authorization to award construction contract for the Zone 4-6 Waterline Intertie and Strong Street Culvert project to W. John Gray Construction. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor Long. I'll be presenting this staff report. We also have Kevin Carter, our deputy director of public works, in attendance. If there's any questions that you have that I can't answer, he'll be able to answer those. So I'm going to run through this real quickly. Staff's recommendation is to authorize the city manager to award the Zone 4-6 Waterline Intertie and Strong Street, excuse me, Waterline Intertie to W. John Gray Construction and enter a, into a construction contract in the amount of $207,243.45 and establish a maximum contract amount, including a 10% contingency of $227,968. This project includes a combination of two of the city's water distribution pressure zones and will provide an increased level of reliability for water delivery. The project area is primarily located between the McLean Community Center and a utility easement on that property, and then along Rotterville Road north to Loop Road from that location near New Bern Park. The bid package was publicly advertised on March 12th and the bids were open on April 14th, 2020. The city received seven bids. The bids ranged from approximately $207,000 to $411,000. The lowest bid received for the project was from W. John Gray Construction. It was determined to be responsive and responsible. The construction budget for the project in the CIP is listed at $300,000. The city, and the total budget for the project was $350,000. Staff expects the entire project to come in at less than $300,000 for the entire project. This project is being funded by water reserves. Staff recommends that the council award the Zone 4-6 Waterline Intertie and Strong Street Culvert project to W. John, W. John Gray Construction, the amount listed in the staff report. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, we have Kevin Carter here as well.
Does anyone have any questions for either Meredith or Kevin?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, my question is the very large difference of the lowest bid versus the next closest one. Is it because of a different variation of materials? Or are they a construction company that's out of the area and they were desirous to try to get this contract? Or are they a local construction company? Because I don't remember ever hearing their name before when we've had CIP projects.
Yeah, this is a local contractor. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, but we've also awarded them the Perk Ponds project and they've done that over the last couple of years? Or is this a different gray?
It's, they're brothers, actually.
They're brothers.
They're partnering, Bill, the one that did the Perk Ponds is doing, is a subcontractor for John, his brother. And John was a subcontractor for Bill for the Perk Ponds doing the trucking. So they work in conjunction.
Did they, they do the Culvert on Harland Way as well?
They did do the Culvert on Harland Way, yes. That was, that was this company.
To answer your question, Councilmember Glazer, is there a local firm and they performed well on past city projects?
Great, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Hearing none from the council, we will open it to public comment. If you would like to comment on this item, please call 725-1484. We receive no calls, so we will move on to a motion.
Oh, nobody's going for it. All right. I'll read this long one. I hope there's a short one further for somebody else. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award the Zone 4 and 6 Waterline Intertie and Strong Street Culvert Project, capital improvement project 9938, to W. John Gray Construction in the amount of $207,000, $207, $243.45 and establish a maximum contract amount, including 10% contingency of $227,968, and authorize city manager or his designate to execute the contract and other related documents.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Siana?
Councilmember Glazer?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
And Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you, Siana. Our next item is authorization to award construction contract for the countywide accelerated cure slurry project for 2020 to Draco Construction. Staff report, please.
So again, our deputy director of Kevin, Public Works, Kevin Carter, prepared this staff report. I'll present that and Kevin's also available to answer questions if this comes up. It's staff's recommendation that the council authorize the city manager to award the countywide accelerated cure slurry project to Draco Construction entered into a construction contract in the amount of $927,248.78 with no contingency. For the past several years, the city of Fortuna has partnered with other local jurisdictions, including the County Humboldt, City of Arcata, City of Eureka, Trinidad, and Rio Dal on an annual payment maintenance project. Each year, the response, the responsibility for soliciting and awarding bids, executing contracts, and paying contractors has rotated among select jurisdictions for a combination of fiscal years 2019, 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21. This responsibility will fall onto the city of Fortuna. This type of maintenance project preserves the life and increases the longevity of streets by slurry sealing them. Working with the other agencies helps the city to receive lower construction costs and lower the administration cost by sharing those with the other cities. The city streets to be slurry sealed in Fortuna include the River Lodge parking lot, Park Street from Main Street to the loop in the park, 10th and 11th Streets from Main to L., Boyd and Lane from Franklin to the end of the cul-de-sac, Denaway Court from Boyd to the end of the cul-de-sac, Francisco Place from Centistrar to the end of the cul-de-sac, Inarizi Court from Francisco to the end of the cul-de-sac. The project was advertised on March 5th and bids were, and bids were.
Can I make, let me jump in real quick. Sorry, Mayor, there's a typo there. I made a mistake. Obviously, they weren't advertised in 2017, but they were, they were advertised February 25th, 2020, and the bids were open on April 6th, 2020. I'm sorry, I noticed that earlier, but it was an error on my behalf on writing the report.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. The bids range from $915,000 to $1,046,000 approximately and were extremely competitive. The table with the amount of each bid is included with the staff report. Construction of this project is expected to take place in the summer and be completed by September. The city's portion of the work will be $96,353 approximately is included, will be included in the budget once the current, is included in the 2020, 2021 capital improvement program and will be included in the budget, budget once the current budget is approved. So this is for next fiscal year. The city administration of the project will require temporary appropriation of an additional $830,894, which will be reimbursed by partner agencies within 30 days of the expenditure on those city streets. Staff, there's, there is also the commitment letters you could find from the other cities are in the staff report, so you can see those from all the other cities participating in the county. So with that, staff's recommendation to, is to award the countywide accelerated cure slurry project to Draco Construction in the amount of $927,248.78. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you Mayor, does anyone have any questions?
Madam Mayor, I'm back to the same question, um, is Draco a local or out of town, um, business?
All of the contractors that have bid on this are from out of town. This is a specialty construction and there's not enough work for a local contract typically, local contract provide these types of services, so all of the bidders for this were from out of town.
The last time, if I remember right, the last time we did a slurry coating in town, wasn't there a shortage of the slurry materials, so we added time delay? If, if that was the case, are these people gonna guarantee that they do it in a timely manner?
So we have the contract provisions for performance and, and we can hold them to that, um, but all I can say is I think everybody's going into it with the best intentions. I mean, there are some things that happen in circumstances beyond a contractor's control, so let's hope that's not the case. But right now, every indication is that they'll be able to get the project done on time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, if I remember right, the, the oil comes from out of town, but if Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the aggregate for the project is produced locally.
That, that's correct, um, I believe Mercer Frasier is their main supplier for the aggregate for the smaller sandy, um, rock.
That's my only comment.
Anyone else?
The other item is that there's a, um, the striping is a, is a big portion of the project as well and that was a, of, with a, a we don't have a local striper, so that's an out of town company as well.
Anyone else? We'll open it up for public comment, if you would like to comment on this item, please call seven two five, one four eight four. We'll give it a few seconds and see if we get any phone calls. We see no phone calls, we will close public comment and move on to a motion.
I make a motion to award the countywide accelerated cure slurry two thousand and twenty project, CIP number ninety-nine fifty-three to Draco Construction in the amount of nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents and authorize the city manager or his designee to execute the contract and other related documents.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, Sienna? Councilmember Glazer?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes, thank you Sienna. Our next item is Authorization to Award Contract Services for City Attorney to Mitchell Law Firm. Staff report please.
Yes, so the city of Fortuna formerly contracted with David Tranberg for legal services. Mr. Tranberg was a city attorney and provided legal services to the city for over thirty years. Mr. Tranberg resigned in March of two thousand and nineteen. Following Mr. Transberg, Tranberg's resignation, the city contracted with the Mitchell Law Firm on an interim basis with Russell Gans and Ryan Plots as the two primary attorneys for Mitchell Law Firm providing those services. A formal request for proposals was issued by the city and advertised in a newspaper of general circulation and it was also emailed to several local law firms. On March sixteenth, the council approved a selection committee consisting of Mayor Long, Councilmember Stanfield, city manager, city clerk, and the police chief. The request for proposals closed on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. The city received two qualified proposals, one from the law office of Cindy Day Wilson and one from the Mitchell Law Firm. The selection committee evaluated the two proposals and identified the Mitchell Law Firm as the most qualified to provide legal services to the city. It was the consensus of the selection committee that the city contract with the Mitchell Law Firm, that the city contract with the Mitchell Law Firm and that no follow-up interviews were needed to confirm the most qualified firm. The Mitchell Law Firm in Eureka currently serves several municipal clients in other cities and special districts within Humboldt County. The two primary attorneys for the Mitchell Law Firm that would continue to provide services for the city would be Russell Gans and Ryan Plots. If, if awarded the contract, the Mitchell Law Firm um, will act as a legal representative of the city and advisor to the city council, the mayor, city manager, city staff, and various boards of commissions of the city. The firm selected would also perform other work as required for a three-year term. A list of typical tasks that they would con, that they would complete is included with the staff report. The anticipated amount for legal services, um, is not expected to change with the hiring of the Mitchell Law Firm. Uh, in the past, we budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars a year for these legal services and actually we reduced that to sixty thousand in the current proposed budget, so it actually we're expecting it to be slightly less. A copy of the proposal from the Mitchell Law Firm is included with the staff report. And with that, that concludes my presentation and staff would be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have questions? Hearing none, we will open it for public comment. If you would like to comment on this item, please call seven two five, one four eight four. We see the public comment, so we'll move on to our next item. This one I'm excited about, um, our item is considered- What? Don't we need to- Oh, I keep skipping the motion thing, what is moving on?
You want the meeting over with?
Apparently I do.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute agreement for legal services with Mitchell Law Firm.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, Sienna? Councilmember Glazer?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes.
See, I was just excited about this next one and I've messed up twice already tonight. All right, consider allowing Fortuna Union High School senior graduate pictures on Fortuna Boulevard median. We have a staff report?
Yes, so staff's recommendation is that the council authorize the Parks Department to place signs of graduating Fortunia, Fortuna Union High School seniors on the Fortuna Boulevard medians. Fortuna Union High, Fortuna Union High School has approximately one hundred and eighty graduating seniors who will not be able to have a formal graduation due to the COVID-nineteen restrictions. With the assistance from Safe and Sober, the, the high school would like to be able to work with park staff to place the signs on the Boulevard medians to honor these students, these seniors' accomplishments. The city ordinance, ordinance exists that restricts the placement of signs on the medium, median as well as requiring an encroachment permit in order to do so. The Safe and Sober Committee has submitted an encroachment permit for the installation of the signs, however, staff did not want to proceed without council approval as municipal code regarding the Fortuna Boulevard limits the types of signs that can be displayed. Our city attorney has reviewed their request and recommended that we, and recommended that we can allow use of the median for photographs provided safety measures are in place without the resolution. The municipal code also states that the performance of functions such as placing banners across the street, sidewalk sales, special events, closing of streets, et cetera, within the public right of way, which in any way places the city at risk or anyway hinder the, or restrict the use of the right of way for its normal and customary function require an encroachment permit. So we, um, therefore, these banners could be approved under the encroachment permit process. The signs would be spaced evenly by park staff in order to avoid, avoid perforations to irrigation lines or sprinkle their heads and they would be removed on or around June eighth, twenty twenty. A photo of what the signs would look like is included with the staff report. The signs would be funded by the high school and Safe and Sober organization and there would be no cost to the city beyond the staff time necessary for the placement. Therefore, it's staff's recommendation that the council authorize the high school and the Parks Department to place signs of graduating seniors, Fortuna Union High School seniors on the Fortuna Boulevard medians under an encroachment permit. And then also, um, one of the things that we're requesting is that we waive the fees for this. And again, I think this is, you know, something that we're bringing to council, again, we didn't want to contradict the municipal code and without council's approval, but we think this is something that, um, will be supported by the community, it'll show the high school the support and something, you know, that we can do in these times to try to ease the burden that the restrictions have placed from the normal activities. So with that, that concludes my staff report and I'll hand it back to the council, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Does anyone have any questions?
I think it's great.
I, I, all of the, all of the years that have gone by, I've probably been the most, uh, bulldog-ish and aggressive whenever I see a, an estate sale sign or a um, garage sale sign or a business unbeknownst to what our municipal codes are, putting out a banana board to say that they're having a meat sale or, uh, the best coffee is available right across the street. So, um, this is not a hard sell. This is a win-win for the entire city and it also uh, allows the high schools graduating class to be shown in full honor. And, uh, I, I think it's great, I think it's wonderful that, that the Safe and Sober money will be put into a really good use for the signage um, and whatever else it has to be required.
Any other comments? Well, I appreciate the, whoever brought this to us, the high school and the Safe and Sober Committee, and I am just glad that, um, we're doing something for our kids, so. Uh, we will open public comment on this item, if you would like to make a comment, please call seven two five, one four eight four. Receiving no public comment, we will go back to our agenda for a motion.
Yeah, you're caught. Uh, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a Fortuna Union High School and the Parks Department to place signs of graduating Fortuna Union High School seniors on the Fortuna Boulevard medians and waive encroachment permit fees.
Second. We have a second, Sienna? Councilmember Glazer?
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. All right, thank you guys. So our next item is a discussion item for the police facility planning update.
Okay, so I'll be providing this staff report. Really, staff wanted to come to the council to provide an, an update on the efforts to develop a police facility at twenty-six hundred Renerville Road and seek council input on how to proceed forward. As the council is aware, the current police facility was originally constructed in nineteen sixties when the population of Fortuna was four thousand with a minor expansion project to bring the facility to its current configuration in the nineteen nineties and with a size of approximately thirty-three hundred square feet, and that's including the basement. Currently, Fortuna has a population of roughly three times that of twelve thousand, six hundred people and has significantly, um, higher number of department staff. The size of the police department is projected to increase in number as the city continues to grow. Some of the deficiencies of the existing facility were documented in a memo from Chief Downey uh, on February twenty-eighth and included lack of privacy and conflicts between uses, poor condition for dispatch, poor, poor configuration and overlapping uses, uh, security issues related to proximity of the department to the alley, um, lack of privacy for interviews, suspects and victims being interviewed in close proximity, lack of storage for files, evidence and others, and only one meeting room, break room that served multiple purposes, including the patrol room and meeting room and conference room. Recognizing these deficiencies, in August two thousand and nineteen, the city council authorized the city manager to make an offer on two properties at twenty-six hundred and twenty-six fifty Newburgh Road, the former site of the Eureka Physical Therapy Building at the core of Newburgh, excuse me, Newburgh and Renerville Road. Um, and also authorized, um, the expenditure of some money to complete a feasibility study to identify the suitability of the parcels for reuse, uh, as a police facility and develop a schematic design. The feasibility study was completed and the need was identified for, the, the need for a long-term facility was identified um, with a size of approximately thirteen thousand square feet with an estimated cost of five point four million dollars. Um, although the cost of a project this size is outside of what was found to be affordable by the city, the city proceeded with the purchase with the hope of identifying funds in the future for the construction of, of facility at that location. The city proceeded enclosed escrow on the building on April twenty-ninth and took possession of the building approximately three weeks prior to the close of escrow after the onset of the COVID-nineteen emergency with the primary reason of providing more space to our, our sworn and non-sworn personnel within the police department. Um, one of the primary, um, items is to, to protect the police was found to be, um, having enough space that people weren't right next to each other, reducing the risk for transmitting disease as well as having redundant facilities for scheduling, so we don't have crews overlapping. Um, in order to use the building, minor improvements were made in equipment purchases to secure the building and allow for the use of the space during the emergency, including radio and communication equipment and services, fencing, some additional computers and cleaning supplies. Having this building at this time has improved the safety for the department and the police department's ability to respond to the COVID-nineteen emergency. Additionally, the building being occupied and, and being used by the police will ensure that it's maintained or repaired on a regular basis, not mention provided needed space for patrol staff to spread out and work. It is our hope that we can recover much of the money spent to move the, the building in this emergency time, uh, from FEMA as part of the city's emergency response effort, as a part of the city's emergency response effort. In fact, we have a phone call with, uh, FEMA tomorrow to discuss grant reimbursement and the steps that will be needed to, to seek that reimbursement. And I'd just like to contrast this, the last facility that the city bought at two eighty-twelfth street was never occupied by the police and, and so we think this is a, you know, the police occupying this building and making use of it is, is something that's different in the last effort that we had at the prior location and one that's ultimately gonna lead to this building being accepted and, and having utility for the department. In fact, our police staff who have been working at the building have come together and they have identified a layout within the existing building footprint that could meet the needs of the department on a short-term basis. So the existing building, um, with the enclosed area, including the area of the pool which would need to be, which would need to be converted is approximately fifty-seven hundred square feet. And keep in mind, the usable space in the existing police facility is closer to a thousand, three thousand square feet, so almost double the size. So staff, you know, with this concept that our police have developed, um, staff would like to contract with an architect or building designer to, to develop a design suitable for bidding and to get an estimate for what it would take to remodel this existing building within, within the existing footprint for use as a police facility. Doing so, um, would provide the police department with a more functional space and it would provide the city with an alternative to the five point four million dollar project that was identified during the, the last feasibility study that was provided. We don't have exact cost for the renovation of the existing building, that, that they could be anywhere between three hundred thousand and seven hundred and fifty thousand and possibly more. But again, we, we won't know that until we do some more design work and have a detailed construction estimate. So at this point, staff would like to spend an additional twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars to develop a construction drawings and that up to, up, updated estimate for the interim use of that building as a police facility. Additionally, although we have a project identified in the draft twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one CIP, the cost of the project is unknown. Um, so currently, um, this project is held in there as a placeholder. We can continue to leave that in there as an indication from council that the city would like to proceed with the project, but I just wanted to, to remind the council that this, this ultimate dollar amount is subject to change. But at the, you know, the council could decide whether you want to keep it in the budget or whether you want to pull it out and then when we know actual cost, add it back in, but at this point, staff would like to keep it in at the amount of three hundred thousand, but just wants council to acknowledge that we don't, we don't have a real cost for that at this time. So we also have Chief Downey on the phone, um, Mike, I don't know if I missed anything that, um, you'd like to state or if you have any other comments before we, we give it back to the council?
Yeah, I, I'd like to, um, uh, you know, the city manager mentioned that, that we would be doubling the size of our current location by moving to the, uh, Newburgh property. Actually, in, in reality, based upon what we actually- Actually, in, in reality, based upon what we actually use at the current police station, if you take the basement away, which is basically just storage, you really won't utilize it for much more than that, will be more than more than doubling by quite a bit. Because the functionality of the space that at the Newburgh property is vastly superior to what we currently have at the current police station. And it also signifies a great opportunity for the council to, to deliver on a new police station for the, for the, the police department and for, for the police officers and staff. They're very excited, they're motivated, they're all in on this project. I can't, I can't emphasize that enough. I, I have not found, I've found it dissenter among any of my staff for this project. They're all in, they're all very eager to get going on this. And it took a little bit of convincing, but I was able to just bring it back to the point that five million dollars in today's world to try and not only reconfigure the, the building this there, but to add on is just not feasible right now. I really truly believe that what we have, with this opportunity we have now will fit the needs of the police department for at least five years and possibly longer. That gives the council time to, to come up with a new design if they need to for, for, for adding on the existing location or to come up with funding to, to deal with future build outs. So I think this is a great opportunity. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mike.
Just one more comment, Mayor Long. And you know, the really, the only wrinkle, I think if we weren't dealing with this COVID emergency that, you know, that, that's the really only confounding factor initially. You know, we wanted to come back and ask for more money to do a really, you know, complete and thorough job, but we recognize, you know, right now that we have to be as frugal as possible, but you know, I guess I would just say that I think it's important to show continued diligence on this project to demonstrate the commitment of the city to our police department to get them an adequate facility. So if the council did want us to move forward and procure more design services, we would go through a competitive process and look for an architect or building designer that could help us with an interior remodel. It would be pretty modest, it would mostly be interior walls, there would be some structural work that would have to happen to occupy the area that was formal, formerly a pool and a hot tub. And then it would be mostly interior walls with the exception of one corner where there would be kind of a pop out on the building where there's an indentation right now. But it would be a very modest project and, and one that really seeks just to convert, you know, the whole building to a usable base. And again, that floor plan that our police have come up with, they've, they've demonstrated at least that, that they think the space will be sufficient for, for their needs.
So you have a twenty-five thousand dollar request and then you would put that out to bid to get an architect?
Yeah, I think we want to look for proposals and, you know, because that's above the threshold that we have to go to competitive selection. We had some time pressure on us last time. And so we did a sole source for the last work, but we would ask for proposals on this one. And, you know, so I would come back with a supplemental budget request if the council approved that. That's not really in there tonight, but if if council provided me direction and wanted to approve that tonight, you could. And then what I would do is process a supplemental budget request. So you'll, we'll have to craft the motion that you have if, if there's some consensus with the council tonight to, to capture the direction that you'd like to, to, to give to me moving forward.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Dean.
Okay, thanks, Tam. One, two questions. One, how many times have we gone to the general fund reserves to pull money out that truly is important to be left in there? Whether we've tried to have matching money for, for grants or special purchases. You know, one of the goals of Measure E was to put money back into the general reserve funds. It seems as though we're failing because we're taking it out more than what we're putting in. Number two, when we had tamper any facility and we did have money outstanding that was in, in holding. The police department, I, I want to use the word foolishly, but with purpose, went out and paid architectural people to come up with plans. And it never went anywhere and fell flat and they used up what was in that, that little pot. And so that sort of remains as a, a core subject on the bad side of the way I look at what could possibly happen. With the, the coronavirus restriction of, of revenues that is aggressively going to hit us and it probably will have to address this again in the next first half of the fiscal year. To me, it's false hope to be spending twenty-five thousand dollars on architectural designs or putting it out for bid when we won't be able to do diddly squat until things get back to par and we actually get fight. Somehow or another find grant money, whether it becomes from FEMA or whatever federal, federal agency. It, it really, I think it should be, we should be more conservative. Hold back and say it's not the time to be taking money out of general reserves. You have the facility right now to benefit from, let's wait a few months to see how we recover from, from how the, the lifting of our restrictions come into play. And then readdress it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one. I'm gonna have to disagree with, with Dean. And I would highly suggest that the rest of the council, I contacted Chief Downey and he gave me a tour of what they've done down there and they've got the floor all marked out with tape, they've got a nice plan drawn. They've put a lot of work and a lot of effort into this and they're very excited. It's very conservative what they're, you know, what they're planning on do. There's nothing extravagant about. I think this is a good opportunity for, at least to get a police station started and we can't get a price on how much it's going to cost, so we can't start looking for money to do the work until we have the plans done. So I think, you know, it's a small price to pay just to get the plans done because we've got that building, we will be using these plans. So that money won't be going to waste. And then we can start looking for the funds to do the remodel. And, and I would suggest to the rest of the council to contact Chief Downey. He would gladly give you a tour of the place down there and you can see they've got tape on the walls where they're gonna put doorways, they've got the floor all taped out where the, the rooms are. So it gives you a really good idea of what's gonna happen down there. That's all.
I would add that getting plans drawn is a process. And even if we go out now and we get our person, it's still gonna be a few months before they would be finalized. So starting now with our twenty-five thousand dollars doesn't mean we're gonna start construction because it's definitely a process to get the plans drawn, make changes, go back to the table, come back to the architect, back to the PD. So it's something we could do right now while we're waiting for this COVID-nineteen thing to pass and then we would be ready down the road.
I agree that it's part of the process of getting started. We don't know where we're going until we have a, a layout of what we can do. And utilizing what they've already laid out and then having it put down and make a set of, of plans. You can then do takeoffs, get the materials list and figure out with labor how much it costs to actually do it. May not happen for a while, but at least we know where we're going instead of sitting on the sideline.
Well, I appreciate how much they pared down their, their ask from the original thirteen thousand square foot conception. So I'm willing to put the additional monies into the hands of the people that need to use it to get those drawings drawn up. So I'm in favor of the additional expenditure.
Mayor Long, if I could just make one comment too. This is kind of, this has been a long ongoing effort. You know, if you recall the architectural feasibility study that happened in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen. They identified a building at the old dealership at two eighty twelfth street and you know, that project came in with a price tag over ten million dollars. We then identified the site at twenty-six-hundred Ronderville Road in an effort to find something that's more affordable and perhaps, you know, modifying the existing building with an addition might be have a lower cost and still meet the needs of the department. We got to a five point four million dollar project and now we're hoping to get something identified that costs less than a million bucks. And again, it's, I think we've all acknowledged, you know, the council has acknowledged and staff has recognized that the, there's a need for this change. And so I appreciate the council's direction. Again, we, I guess we can't have a motion because it's a discussion item. But if, if the council is, has a consensus or is leaning towards providing us direction to bring back a supplemental budget request and, and, and start procuring those services, I think that's all, that's all I need. So if that's the council's general direction, then I, I think I have a sense.
I'm just excited about this one because the police are on board and I think that's just really important and that getting their buy-in on this project and getting them all involved, I think is just a win-win and I'm hoping that we can actually get them a facility of some sort, at least as part of it.
Yeah, I think Mayor Protem's suggestion that any interested council members tour the site, I think is a good one. I think you can really see the potential and really see the you know, the cost-effective solution that this could be for a long-term need.
Does anyone have any other thoughts or comments? Should we open public comment? If you would like to make a comment on this item, please call seven two five one four eight four. We received no phone calls, so from what comments that everyone has made, it sounds like we're gonna give the direction to our city manager to pursue the architect for the budget of twenty-five thousand dollars. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, Siana's giving me a signal here. Do we have a caller?
We've received one caller and we're gonna put him through right now.
Thank you.
Are you there? Go ahead, sir. You're live with the city council.
Siana, we can't hear anything.
Okay, hang on, Mike. Hang on, Mike. They're having a hard time picking you up. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can you try one more time, Mike?
Okay.
Go ahead. Please start over, Mr. Lozey. Thanks.
Okay. My name is Michael Lozey. I'm a resident of the city of Fortuna. And I believe that we need to go forward with this project with the expenditure contained in a supplemental budget request of twenty-five thousand dollars. I believe it's important to have this project in moving forward and I do appreciate the comments made by Dean. But I think that this is an important project and I believe that this city would be in a good position to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Siana. Anyone else? Just, no one, phone's not ringing anymore. Okay. Thank you, Mike, for calling in. All right. So we still have our direction to our city manager. So you're good to go, Merritt.
Thank you.
All right. Now our city managers report.
Okay, so first to review our upcoming meeting schedule, bright and early tomorrow morning at eight, eight-thirty AM, we have a special budget meeting that'll also be by Zoom teleconference. Our next regular council meeting will be on June first, also still scheduled to be via teleconference. Our next planning commission meeting will be on May twenty-sixth at six PM. Our next Measure E meeting is scheduled for September fifteenth, five-thirty PM. And the next Roner Community Recreation Park District meeting will be on June third at two-thirty PM. I have a few things to report in my verbal report. One of them is that we've been continued to monitor the reopening of businesses throughout the county under the direction of the County Public Health and the Sheriff's Office. We have volunteered some of our city staff to assist the county staff with certifying businesses in Fortuna in an effort to move the opening of those businesses forward without delay. We're also in the process of developing a plan to reopen City Hall to normal business and acquiring the materials and supplies to do so. We hope to have a draft planned by the end of the week that includes safety measures, distancing measures, health monitoring, disinfection stations and other items for, for normal, necessary to resume normal operations. We are proceeding with our police chief recruitment and we have, have made a conditional offer of employment to a police chief candidate and are moving forward with the next step in the hiring process. Ultimately, the council will have to approve the hire and the contract for that position. So the council will have some approvals. I continue to work with our finance director and department heads to, to finish the city budget. We brought the draft budget, as you know, to the council last week in a budget session. We have one more tomorrow, but we're continuing to fine tune that and refine our recommendations as we move forward with, with the budget. One of the items that we're paying close attention to is the assumptions for the revenue loss from sales tax. Different cities are, are making different estimates and that's one thing that we want to be very careful and, and our finance director is going back and double checking those assumptions because again, our revenue loss projections are just that, they're an assumption primarily from our sales tax consultant, HDL. Again, we really don't know exactly what that's gonna be and, you know, to councilmember Glazer's comments earlier. You know, we're gonna have to continue to look at our budget, we're gonna have to continue to look at sales tax every quarter and adjust our budget accordingly. We don't know how this is gonna play out. So it's a, it's a very it's a very uncertain time for cities and budgets. Again, this is our best guess today. And every day we're learning more and we're understanding the timeline that this is gonna take. So this is a very important area that we're gonna continue to pay attention through, not only until we approve a budget, but afterwards. That concludes my verbal report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Merritt? All right. Thank you, Merritt. I know it's been hard working from home and back and forth and all that, but I'm hoping we're almost done. And future items. Anything?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Tammy. No, you did last time. You get to go ahead, Tam.
Okay. I was just gonna say that I was up early this morning and went to my Zoom meeting for our budget at eight-thirty this morning. And there's nobody there. I called Siana, she wouldn't answer her phone, I finally called Sue. And the meeting's tomorrow. I thought it was today and I deliver the, feed the ER tomorrow morning. So I don't know if we can postpone it till like, I could be back by nine fifteen or if I just check out during that time and come back. I don't know exactly what the right thing to do here is.
Wouldn't necessarily be able to postpone it because it's already been posted with that eight-thirty time. So the only, the only way I could see proceeding would be to call the meeting to order and then adjourn the meeting to a time certain, if that is what your council would want to do. Otherwise, it would be a coun, a canceled meeting and then we could call a special meeting within twenty-four hours.
Whatever, whatever the council wants to do, if they want to start it at eight-thirty and I'll just leave for that half hour and come back, or if they want to start it and postpone it till nine fifteen. It's up to the council.
So Tammy, we're talking about the water and wastewater funds to start out tomorrow. Did you have anything in there that was concerning? Were there any questions or anything that would you feel like you were missing out if you missed part of that?
No, I would not feel like I was missing out.
Okay. Well, based on that, I think that if you don't have any grave concerns, we probably should just keep it at eight-thirty and you go and do your thing and come back as quick as you can.
Okay.
That sound like what everyone else would want to do? That sound like what everyone else would wanna do?
Well, actually, I'd just start at 10 o'clock, but I got voted out.
I think that will work.
Hopefully, it'll be done by 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
We'll start doing a filibuster.
All right, moving on to city council reports and comments.
Wait, 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 wait. It was, what for future agenda items?
You took too long.
No, I had to courteously give Tammy the, the limelight.
All right.
I, I brought it up, I brought it up at one of the meetings about banning 5G cell towers in the city. But if we do do that and address it, it has to be after the coronavirus thing is over with. So we actually have a public meeting at River Large or whatever big facility where the public can actually show up to, to express their dissent. So I do definitely wanna follow through on that. But I said, it's a, it's a time issue with coronavirus and the, the lack of openings in any kind of a huge public forum.
So if we put this off, can they just come into our town anyway while we're snoozing? Or do they have permission?
They, as far, go ahead, Merritt.
We are working, we actually have a proposal in front of the city now. So this is something I'd like to bring to the council sooner than later. And our planning department's working on a staff report for that now. So I anticipate that we'll wanna bring this forward before the coronavirus emergency subsides. Because we have projects that are being requested in the city at this time. So it's something that I wanna bring to the council sooner than later. And we like to keep this as a future agenda item.
Well, I have to object, but there, there's a lot of people that could provide ample enough discussion versus the company that wants to inadvertently put it down our throat. And the, and the public needs to be available, not have a Zoom feed, but actually be present, present to be able to talk in person. So I'd rather delay it from the planning commission's push. If the 5G gentleman is pushing it, that pretty much tells me that it's a wrong direction to go. I'd rather have it so that if it's delayed five, six months, it's not on the agenda for the planning commission, that's fine.
I think though, we have guidelines that tell us we have to process applications within so many days. Is that true, Merritt? Merritt, you're still on mute.
Again, our community development department is looking at that. They're consulting with the attorney. But I, I've heard Councilmember Glazer's comment that he'd like to delay it. At this point, if we bring it forward sooner, it'll be out of necessity.
This was an item of discussion during our transportation, communication and public works policy committee meetings. And I will see if I can find the material that was provided during that. Because there was, it was a big deal there too. And there was an attorney there. And I will see what I can look up in the material that was provided during that meeting back in January.
That would be helpful, thank you.
Okay. So I think that we're all in agreement that this is something we want to address. And we probably shouldn't talk about it too much more right now since it is not on the agenda. I think that we're definitely in agreement that we wanna see this on our agenda. Anything else for future public agenda items? All right, hearing that, we'll move on to city council reports. Dean?
Madam Mayor, it's so nice to be able to talk to all of you. The Republican Coast Energy Authority, I don't have anything to report. I did want, just as a, a weather blurb. Did anybody experience that rain power cell that hit about 5 o'clock yesterday afternoon? That was dumping water like a fire hose? Because it just about flushed my house off my yard. It was huge. I have been expressing my desire for having the opening of businesses that are practical. And I know businesses have to submit applications with the Department of Health and Human Services to be approved proactively. There have been more public outcries at the courthouse and those will continue demanding that, that people get to have their lives returned back to where they used to be with common sense. And I read the implication that, that some of the openings that were going to be coming into play were going to be held in checks and balances by Dr. Frankovich based on the loss of life of a 97-year-old lady from Alder Bay. And I hope that she does not delay the opening of the businesses based on one person and hold 150,000 members of citizens in Humboldt County hostage. I do want to express my appreciation for all of the members of the community, the businesses, retails, the, the police departments, EMTs, the people at hospitals, all the people there on the front line trying to do their job as effectively as possible, having to wear those masks, which are the most godly things trying to breathe through and do it without catching the virus. You people have such admiration from all of us as council and for our city employees doing the same thing. You are essential workers, making sure that we have water and we have sewer functions. We have the streets being taken care of, the police department defending us. You know, it's all bonus points for all of you and kudos, kudos, kudos. So to Dr. Frankovich, when, when the Jewish people were talking to the, the king of Egypt saying, let my people go, I have to say the same thing, let my people in Fortuna go and let them do what they should be doing with common sense and, and protections. God bless America, God bless our troops. And yes, I want this to end. I'm, I'm growing old and ready to get back to way of life at the council chambers so we can actually tease each other two feet away rather than talking to a, a cell phone.
Thank you, Dean. Mike?
Thank you. I've had a, interestingly enough, a busy couple of weeks. I've been attending the League of California City webinars, one on Calpers, which was interesting. The other on small cities that was part of the Small Rural City List Serve and Group. And opening City Hall back up and providing services for our community. And I believe that Humboldt County started opening their offices up today with, there was a lot of protocols to go through. But they will be able to start serving their citizens and attending permits and such as that. I also attended a Zoom meeting with Assemblyman Huffman and Representative Huffman. And that was interesting also. And I will say that if you attend one of his, you will be called upon to ask a question or speak or make a comment. It was, was a, had, everybody had an opportunity. There were people there from Eureka, Arcata, Trinidad, Crescent City. And one more, but I can't remember where besides me from Fortuna. And one of the discussions was on revenue loss as a COVID-related expense. Because it is. I also been calling into the weekly OES Humboldt County Conference calls. We had a historical commission meeting, haven't had one of those for a while. And our new historical commissioner, former council member Doug Strel, got to participate in that, but probably not in the way he anticipated. We discussed the annual goal setting and exhibits. And then also have finally a HCOG meeting this coming Thursday, which will also be done by Zoom. So since I've been Zooming around, I decided to put my Hawaiian gear on and look forward to a vacation hopefully in March because we have five Mondays that month. So I'm, I'm planning. So that's all I have to report now.
Thank you, Mike. Your Hawaiian shirt is kind of making me a little mad because I was supposed to be in Hawaii right now.
This is not a good time to go to Hawaii. You'd spend 14 days in your motel room.
That's why I didn't go. So that's just like a tease thing going on there. Jeremy?
I have a Fortuna Business Improvement District Zoom meeting scheduled for Wednesday. That'll be the first one we've had in, in a couple of months. I do wanna acknowledge the hard work that the Fortuna Business Improvement District Director and the Director of the Chamber of Commerce have been doing to keep our business community informed throughout the COVID crisis. And just appreciate their daily input to help people navigate the reopening of businesses and the, the compliance of businesses and so forth. Parks and Rec has not met recently, but I have noticed all the efforts on the Boulevard with the repair of the sprinklers and, and the edging and mowing was so nice to see. All the trimming of the trees, just really been noticing how hard those guys are working throughout all this. And then I also wanted to acknowledge that I've noticed a lot of foot patrols up and down Main Street with the PD, which is great as well. So other than that, I don't have anything else to report. Just hope everybody stays happy, healthy and safe. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Tammy?
I had a Humboldt Transit Authority meeting and they're working on trying to get the transits back on the regular schedule. Take it, they were running with no fees, but finding out running with no fees, they're getting a lot of people on there that really aren't going anywhere. They just wanna get out of the weather so there's not any room for the people that actually need it. So they're gonna go back to charging fees. They have worked out a plan to put the driver kind of like in a glass cage almost to protect the driver from everybody. So they can actually have people come in one door and out the other. And they'll still be doing sectioning off seating. But they are working on trying to get back to a little bit of normal. And that's the only meeting that I've gone to. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Tammy. So I have been quiet on meetings as well. Redec due to Memorial Day is meeting right now. So Jer, neither Jeremy or I were able to attend that because we are here. So there was a Cruz-Humboldt event in Fortuna last Friday night, which was very well attended. And they wanna do it again this Friday night. I would really like to thank the PD and the Fire Department for joining in. And I would just like to encourage people that if you want to do this, you need to follow the laws. You cannot burn out, you cannot speed, you cannot race, you cannot do all of those things. So if you don't want to ruin it for everyone else, please behave yourselves if you want to join. I feel bad for our police department and the frustrations that they are dealing with right now with not even being able to take anyone to jail and just constantly rearresting the same people over and over. And I can't imagine how frustrating that must be to all of them. So thank you guys for hanging in there and for continuing to do a great job for Fortuna. So I don't have anything else at this time either. So if we would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Close session.
Motion to adjourn to close session?
We have closed session?
Yep.
Okay. Guess what?
All those in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I gotta find my. I only printed out the first two pages of the agenda, so apparently I needed one more page.
And I can share, I have all the materials we need, we can share. So I'd suggest maybe like a five minute, just for a couple minute break while we transfer computers. We're logged off. And if we could have the council stay on and maybe mute.
We only have Kevin and Mike Downey on here, right? That need to log off or leave the meeting.
Yeah, and then we're broadcasting on Access Humboldt. So I just wanna make sure we get our trans, off, so.
Okay, well, somebody signaled.
I, yeah, then we'll let you know when we get everything closed down and we're done recording.
Do you need to read out the close session item?
Yeah, I'm trying to find my.